Test, one, two, three, test.
Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the council meeting for October 18th, 2010 to order. First thing as always is roll call determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson. Wyffenbuck. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Wa. Brown. Mason. We have quorum.
Very good, thank you. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, we would appreciate it if you please turn that off or put it in the vibrate, or in the vibrate mode. We certainly appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak tonight on any issue, whether it's on the agenda or not, we do a speaker request form, so it looks like this. There, to your left, our right, if you please fill that out with your name and also the item. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. Please keep in mind during the public comment periods, we do time those. We do time those to three minutes each. So with that, we're into our invocation. I don't see our pastor here, so I would ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. We're now on to the adoption of the agenda. I do have a couple notes here. There's a request to move item number 12, item number 12, to follow the executive session, and also move items 35 and item 36 to follow item number 92. Any additional additions to the agenda? Please turn on your light. Go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Status of implementation of waste and fraud hotline.
Okay, we will put that, let's hang on a second here. Let me find our numbers. Let's call that 82A. Hotline. Had you talked with anybody, Alderman Quaker, as far as giving us an update, or you just looking to put it on? Okay, Jason, you can do that. Okay, very good. So make sure we have someone available. Any additional items to be added to the agenda? Sure. Yep. So far, what we have is the addition of 82A, which is an update on the hotline. That'll be 82A, and then also a request to move item number 12 to follow the executive session, and to move items 35 and item 36 to follow item number 92. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda, as always, is the adoption of the minutes, the approval of the minutes. Chair, would look for a motion to approve the minutes from the September 27, 2010 special council meeting and the October 4th, 2010 regular council meeting. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We're now on to awards and recognitions. I don't see, I don't see Gene Tally in the audience. Oh, there he is. Okay, very good. Usually, we actually have a lot more vets. Gene, why don't you go ahead and come on up, and we're going to award our veteran of the month. Well, whoops. There we go. As always, we're very pleased to be able to award our veteran of the month to someone that has served his country, and Glenn is no exception. Let me read this real quickly. "In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the October 2010 Veteran of the Month recognition to Gene Tally." There we go. Now we got some sound. "Mr. Tally entered the United States Army in 1972. He was assigned to the 554th Military Police Company in February of 1973 in Stuttgart, Germany, and then to the 502nd MP Company in Fort Hood, Texas, in 1976. He was later assigned to the 2nd Armored Division Military Police Investigations in May of 1977 as the Chief of Operations. He was discharged from the military in June of 1979, born in Keystone, South Dakota, where he attended grade school. Mr. Tally graduated from Hill City High School and earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Texas. He's been married for 36 years, has two sons and three grandsons." Wow, very good. "He is currently the lead instructor for the law enforcement technology at Western Dakota Tech in Rapid City and serves as a deputy sheriff for the Custer County Sheriff's Office. As a patriot, he has always promoted patriotism at Western Dakota Tech for several years, helping with the Veterans Day program the past several years. He works with the veterans group at the school and is active as a volunteer here in Rapid City with several veterans organizations. He is a member of the Veterans Vietnam Motorcycle Club, the Patriot Guard, and Post 46. Mr. Tally is proud of his country and the work with his students at Western Dakota Tech, and he teaches them to be aware of the privilege that they have to be part of this great nation." Mr. Tally has been commended for his service to his country and to Rapid City and the Black Hills community. With that, Gene, congratulations.
I'm not one for many words, but thank you very much for this honor and stuff. There's usually somebody more deserving, but I'll continue to work for veterans' causes and encourage you to do so also.
Mr. Malteverne, come on up. It's your time in the spotlight. Chief Malteverne, we're honored to recognize your 20 years of service in the Rapid City Fire Service, and since you're the fire chief, I get to say a few words about your career with Rapid City. Mike actually is a Spearfish native. He, he actually earned his associate's degree in fire science from Casper College. How I know him is as a firefighter and actually has command of the fire station out at the airport for a number of years. But, he's also a member of the Hazmat team, or has been. He was also assistant fire chief in education and administration. He also is an experienced leader in wildland fire planning and firefighting. There again, he did manage the fire station out at the airport for nine years. And one of the things I will say is, whenever we have an inspection, the FAA comes in, I will tell you what. I'm not sure that you ever, did you ever get one mark against you? Not once in nine years. That's pretty good. Created a nonprofit group to raise funds for donations to the fire department. He also created a fitness program for firefighters to assist them in passing the physical standards. He also organized and served as a liaison between the Women's Auxiliary and the Rapid City Fire Department. He is an ASA girls softball coach, member of the Black Hills Mountain Box Association. He was named chief May of, May 3rd. Wow, time flies, doesn't it? He's also a current member of the Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department, and tonight, he's joined by his wife, Chris, and daughter, Emily. Twenty great years, we hope, and put this for you're young enough, we hope to see you 20 more years. Mike, congratulations.
If, a little latitude, I've prepared a speech. Just kidding. I got, I'll make it short. This is not a Grammy speech or anything, but I had three people in my career that have done a lot of things for me. I had one of my first supervisors, Dave Krantz, pulled me aside, I'd only been with the department just a short period of time, about 18 months, and he said, "Mike, I want you to go home tonight and write down what you want to do with your career." And I had no idea what he meant, and he said, "No, I'm serious. I want you to write down till the day you retire what you want to do." And so, he encouraged me that I needed to write down, "I want to be fire chief." So, that, and then I wanted to thank you, Ms. Mayor, for about three years ago, you gave me some excellent words of encouragement the first time I ran for fire chief, and I took you to ta, I should say, you took me to task, and I took your words to heart, and that's why I'm standing before you today. And then lastly, I want to thank the two beautiful women out in the audience here. Talking about behind, who's behind me, I guess, with what I do at work is my wife and daughter. They support me, and they're my biggest coaches and supporters and...
Cheerleaders.
Cheerleaders, yeah.
Very good. Congratulations.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for that latitude. It's always wonderful to recognize not only our veteran of the month, but also our long-term employees. Next on the agenda is a general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. Let's see here. We have one speaker request form, and that's from Gene Keslov. There again, Gene, if you would please come forward, identify yourself, and just, please keep in mind, we do time this, so if you just watch the lights, I think you've done this before.
Yeah, I'm getting, kind of.
Gene, can you pull the mic down just a little bit? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Gene Olson Keslov, and I'm going to preface this that this is not about Agenda Item 28, but suggested program. So, I was going to speak one last time about the importance of preserving a historic transom window in one of our historic downtown buildings, but the issue really is bigger than that. Cities across the country are realizing that economic development and historic preservation are not mutually exclusive. By protecting and celebrating their heritage, a city's historic assets, in fact, can further benefit economic development and community revitalization. Many of these communities have common denominators, that being facade and grant easement programs and/or local city ordinances with historic design guidelines. Not only are these programs used across the nation, they exist in our own state today. For example, Sioux Falls, Brookings, and Aberdeen have facade programs. They also have historic preservation ordinances. Preserve South Dakota offers a facade easement program as well. We, the second-largest city in South Dakota, do not have either one. If our historic properties are not maintained, the cost of their rehabilitation will not only increase, but the chances of them maintaining their historic fabric will decrease, and we will all lose. These are programs and tools available that I urge our city to explore that can not only benefit our historic downtown, but also our property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. I do not have any additional speaker requests during the general public comment period. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on any issue not on the agenda? Not, we will move on. Thank you, everyone. We're now on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 3 through 82, and the chair would look for a motion to open the public comment on items 3 through 62 inclusive, please. 3 through 62, and please keep in, okay, thank you. And keep in mind that we did move items 12, 35, and 36. Jason, since we've actually moved these to the end of the agenda, do we want to take public comment here, or do we want to actually, we'll take public comment prior to each one of these items before they come up? Okay, very good. So, we have a motion and a second to open up the public comment period on items 3 through 62, 3 through 62 inclusive, with the exception of 12, 35, and 36. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is items 3 through 50 inclusive, 3 through 50 inclusive, and there again, it will be without items 12, 35, and 36, as we have moved those. Are there any additional items that we need to poll from the consent calendar? If so, please turn on your light. Any items? Whoops. Let's go to Pauline Assumption. She's our finance officer. Go ahead, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to poll number 40, please.
Item number 40, thank you. Any additional items that need to be polled? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, item 3 through 50 inclusive, with the exception of item 40, I know we all want to go home, and also noting that items 3, 35, and 36 have been moved off the consent calendar. What'd I say? Oh, okay. Items 35 and 36 and item 12 have all been moved off the consent calendar. Everyone clear in the motion? Did I make it clear as mud? Do I need to go through one more time? So, we're dealing with items 3 through 50, with exceptions of 12, 35, 36, and 40. Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are on to item number 40, and Alderman Hadcock, could you please read in item number 40?
Number 40 is to set a special council meeting for 12:30 PM on Tuesday, December 28th, 2010, to authorize payment of the end-of-the-year bills.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Pauline, you just want to pull this to make sure that the council realizes that this is on the agenda?
That is correct.
Okay. Very good. And this is an annual event, every year, just in case we need it. We usually do. Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval to set a special council meeting for 12:30 PM, which is Tuesday, December 28th. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent calendar. These are items 51 through 62 inclusive, 51 through 62 inclusive. Chair would ask if any of those items need to be polled. Marcia, I see item 53 does need to be polled. Thank you. Any other items that need to be polled from the continued consent, items 51 through 62 inclusive? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent calendar, items 51 through 62 inclusive, with the exception of item number 53. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Item 53. Deb, could you read that in for me, please?
53 is a request by Dream Design International Incorporated for preliminary plat on lots 14 through 22 of Block 7 and lots 14 through 20 of Block 8 of Red Rocks Meadow Subdivision and located at the northern terminus of Seminole Lane. Move approval?
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Marcia Elkins. I'm sorry, Marcia, one more time?
With stipulations, by the way, Marcia.
PM deadline on Wednesday, that is required. However, the council does wish to approve this, you may approve it with stipulations.
Okay. And did we have a second? Charlene? Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve with stipulations. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the end of the continued consent items. We are on to item number 63, and before we take that, we need to open the public comment period on items 63 through 82. 63 through 82, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's see here. We do have a couple speaker request forms, all on item number 77. The first one is Nick Kennison, item number 77. There again, if you would please identify yourself for the record, and then just watch the lights as it hits yellow. That means you have about 30 seconds left. Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak this evening. Before this evening's meeting, I passed out a pamphlet of suggestions that I have made while thinking through the billboard ordinances here in Rapid and taking issue with, with the issues that are being addressed with the task force that's going to be made. I just wanted to give you guys also a little bit of a feedback. This last Saturday, I was picked up by my sister-in-law, and we were driving through town, and we were driving past the Ramada, and we were stopped at the stoplight there, and the Ramada, or the Radisson, excuse me, they actually have an on-premise billboard that's an LED, and that particular type of situation, as far as my knowledge is, is not going to be addressed by the current task force that's being proposed to be put together. I think that's a critical thing to be looked at because that particular sign is actually so bright that it actually momentarily blinded myself and my, and my sister-in-law to the point where she actually mentioned it to me, and had someone been walking and had it been a green light, you know, that does pose a very serious safety hazard. That would not be addressed by the current ad hoc task force. Beyond that, I did put in an application today for being on the committee. I would like to have your consideration for that and take a look at what I bring to the table, and that would be all these suggestions here. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Brendan Casey, item number 77. There again, Mr. Casey, please identify yourself for the record. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brendan Casey. I'm owner and president of Epic Outdoor Advertising. I have nothing specific. I think the councils all receive my transmissions and information, so with that, I'll let you make your decision, but I would encourage you just to vote against the committee in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Pat Hamilton, item number 77.
Yes, Pat Hamilton, and I think it's very important that we have a broad spectrum of representation on the committee. I think it's important that we have a strong representation from the sign community. They're the ones that are going to have the greatest impact to them because of this. I think we have to have a broad spectrum also from the community because we have to represent the, the needs as a whole of what Rapid City citizens are interested in. I, I think statistically, if you look at the representation of Rapid City, you're going to find that we're overly representing the, the sign group, but I think you have to do that in terms of representing the community as a whole because, as I mentioned, you have to make sure that we all understand what the signage, the sign community is undergoing, what their perceptions are, what their needs are, because the rest of us may not be as familiar as that, so we need to be sure that we include their concerns. I think it's very critical that we get a group that's open, that isn't coming with undue bias, that will listen to each other, and that's on both sides of the fence. It's not going to do us any good for us to get a group that isn't going to talk and listen to each other. And I think you, as a council, have to be very careful to say, "This is what authority this committee has. This is what the restrictions are of this committee. This is what, what the power of this committee is." As a citizen, I was discouraged to find out that the last time that the committee got together, that their recommendations were not taken in any kind of, to me, any kind of a sincere embracing, and I think that might have been because there wasn't enough clear delineation from this group in terms of what that committee was responsible for. I don't think you want community members serving on this committee that do not want to serve again and volunteer their services because they weren't listened to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no further speaker request forms. Anyone else wish to speak to any items? We're taking public comment on items 63 through 82, 63 through 82 inclusive. Seeing none, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to ordinances, and there again, this is not consent. Deb, would you please read in item number 63, please?
63 is the second reading of ordinance number 5672, an ordinance amending section 17.18.030 to add group homes as a conditional use in general commercial zoning district, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Number 64 is first reading of ordinance number 5676, an ordinance amending the temporary use regulations in Chapter 17.50 of Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. We're dealing with item number 64. This is first reading of ordinance number 5676, an ordinance amending temporary uses regulations in Chapter 17.5. Any discussion on that motion? Deb, did you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman, Deb Hadcock.
Just a brief explanation on a lot of these first readings. It's other temporary seasonal, other temporary seasonal stuff on 5677, 5676. Does someone have an explanation of what we're doing here?
Sure. Marcia, did you want to take that up? Go ahead, Marcia.
Certainly. Items 64 through 70 are all related. They are an attempt to streamline our temporary use regulations. It broadens out the timeframes for a number of the temporary uses and how long they can be allowed, and extends those periods. Also addresses some issues that have not been addressed, and so there's various ordinances, including the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District and some of the other districts where they've been addressed, so that we can clearly identify these. It came out of concerns that had been expressed by one of the local businesses, and so we were trying to address those concerns that they can have more temporary uses. There is an increase in fees, and that was discussed at the committee level. If there's any specific questions, I'll try to address those, or if we could address them prior to second reading.
Yep, very good.
Sorry, what kind of temporary uses, I guess, are you talking about? I mean, for an example, maybe?
Marcia?
The example that came forward originally was at the Ramcoata, they would want to put up temporary tents in the parking lot for various activities, and so, because of the way that was written, they could only do it for a 14-day period, and then they had to be moved off. And because of the way they schedule for some of their summer events, that wasn't working for them. And so, that's been modified in this ordinance to allow that. Also, we've addressed some of the issues in the downtown area and some of the park areas, allowing those to be addressed and issued by the Parks Department rather than having to go through a separate review.
So, is there a length of time as, by what you're calling temporary? Is it 20 days, 30 days? I mean, is there a time limit on a temporary use?
Marcia?
In the code currently, there are temporary seasonal and continuous retail businesses, and those have different timeframes. They range from the 14-day permits that are currently allowed to the continuous retail, which is allowed to be on the site continually for a two-year period. So, those are the timeframes that exist now, and these have all been modified and changed based on the specifics. But, if you want more detail, I'd be glad to sit down and go through that with you.
Thank you, Marcia, for the explanation. I appreciate that. It's just, there's a lot of first readings on that, and I just wanted a brief explanation. Thank you very much, Ms. Marcia.
Thank you. We're We're dealing with item number sixty-four. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-five, please.
Sixty-five is a first reading ordinance number fifty-six seventy-seven, an ordinance amending the central business zoning district by adding other temporary seasonal and continual retail business of structure as permitted use in chapter seventeen point one six point zero two zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Item number sixty-five, first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-six, please.
Sixty-six is a first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-eight, an ordinance amending the general commercial zoning district by adding other temporary seasonal and continual retail business or structure as permitted use to chapter seventeen point one eight point zero two zero and removing seasonal and continual retail business or structure as a conditional use in chapter seventeen point one eight point zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is item number sixty-six, first reading ordinance number fifty-six seventy-eight. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-seven, please.
Item sixty-seven is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-nine, an ordinance amending the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District by adding other temporary retail business or structure as permitted use in seventeen point two zero point zero two zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-nine dealing with item number sixty-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number sixty-eight, please.
Sixty-eight is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty, an ordinance amending the SC one Temporary Shopping Center Zoning District by adding other temporary seasonal and continual retail business or structure as permitted use to chapter seventeen point three zero point zero two zero and removing seasonal and continual retail business or structure as a conditional use in chapter seventy point three zero point zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-nine dealing with item number sixty-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-eight, please.
Eight or sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine, sorry.
Sixty-nine is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-one, an ordinance amending the SC two Neighborhood Shopping Center Zoning District by adding other temporary seasonal and continual retail business or structure as permitted use to chapter seventeen point three two point zero two zero and removing seasonal and continual retail business or structure as a conditional use in chapter seventy point three two point zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion dealing with item number sixty-nine, first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-one? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy, please.
Seventy is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-two, an ordinance amending the Civic Center Zoning District by adding other temporary retail business or structure as permitted use in chapter seventeen point four eight point zero two zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-two, item number seventy. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-one, please.
Seventy-one is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-three, an ordinance to establish the M-Hill Overlay Zoning District by adding chapter seventeen point six four to Title seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Item number seventy-one, first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-three. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number seventy-two, please.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-three, an ordinance to establish a residential roofing contractor license by amending section fifteen point one three point one five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and looks like move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is item number seventy-two, second reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-three. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-three, please.
Seventy-three is second reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-four, an ordinance to revise the process of obtaining permits for use of public streets by amending chapter twelve point two eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Item number seventy-three, the second reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-four. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-four, please.
Seventy-four is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-five, an ordinance establishing a one-hundred-foot buffer zone between the malt beverage retail establishment with video lottery and wine retail established with video lottery and residential zoning property by adding chapter five point one two point zero nine five to the Rapid City Municipal Code.
Jason, there's no recommendation on this one? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. This is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-five, item number seventy-four. Jason, did you want to? If not?
Just a couple comments, if I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
This will only affect the regulation of on-off sale beer and wine licenses. It will not affect on-sale liquor, what you think of as a traditional bar or full-service restaurant. There's an Attorney General opinion that very clearly sets out that it's not appropriate for the municipality to regulate those kinds of licenses. So this is limited in its effect.
So, okay, just bring that up, and it can be discussed for a second reading. Motion on the floor is for approval. Item number seventy-four, first reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-five. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-five, please.
Seventy-five is second reading of ordinance number five six six six, an ordinance to remove the permit exemption for replacement of like roofing materials by amending section fifteen point thirteen point zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a typo I would like to point out at the bottom of page one of the ordinance, item number four, where it talks about water tanks, says the capacity has to exceed five thousand gallons, and then it goes in parentheses to say eighteen point nine two seven liters. That decimal point definitely needs to be a comma.
Jason, did you follow that?
Yes, I think if there could just be a motion to amend that section to reflect the number that Alderman Costello indicated, I think that would take care of the issue.
Okay. This is a motion to amend. Can you read again one more time? I'm seeing it. What does it need to be?
It needs to say eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven liters.
Right. So in other words, on the bottom of page one, item number four, we'd be replacing the period with a comma.
Correct.
Okay.
And if someone could make that motion for me, I'd appreciate it.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? Good catch. Thank you. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. Could we have a motion, please? Oh, no. Yep. Thank you. And a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number seventy-six, please.
Seventy-six is a request by Dream Design International Corp. for a layout plat. Plats one and two of Baxter subdivision located South Dakota at, located at seventy-six oh one Pioneer Circle. Move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-seven, please.
Seventy-seven is deny mayor all appointments for the signed code revision task force.
Just get a motion on the floor, and I do have a handout. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Just if I would point to the council that there is a handout. I had a number of council members that had concerns about the size of the committee and also one committee member. You will see that the handout reflects nine members plus two city council members. And if I may, I'm going to read these in real quick. Matter of fact, Jason, you want to put it up on the screen so the audience can see it?
Eleven.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Eleven and two.
Yep, eleven, eleven members plus two. And the members, and I'm going to read this, and I'm going to give a sort of a designation as far as any previous service. Andy Ansley, he would be a new member. Cody Champion would be an old member. Eric Farrar would represent the sign industry. Dennis, is it High Tech, would be from the sign industry. Barry Hoyt would be a new member. Dan Hopp would be a sign industry rep. Let's see, Gene Hunter would be a sign rep. Mark Kirkaby would be a new member. Lisa Modrick would be an old member. Rod Pettigrew would be an old member. And Doug Rumka would be a sign industry rep. And then the two council members would be Aaron Costello and Jordan Mason. The rationale is that would give us three old board, or three old board members, three new board members, and a total of five industry reps. I think that's a very good reflection of, I think, what we need to do with this committee. The reason, quite honestly, I'm bringing this forward, there seems to be a lot of politics around this issue, and quite honestly, I think it's an important enough issue, I think, let's get the, let's make this right. Let's at least get this committee up and running, and I think this basically takes the concerns, at least the concerns that I've heard, out of the equation. Jason Green, did you have a comment? Turn, let's turn your mic on, though. Okay, no trade.
Thank you. I can't turn it on from out here, obviously. The question is, the motion on the floor was to approve. I just want to clarify that it is to approve the appointments, not to approve the denial that's listed on the agenda. You want to approve the appointments to the committee. Is that?
Well, no. The motion that was on the floor was to move, to approve the motion to deny. That was the motion on the floor.
Okay, so it's to deny the appointments to the committee?
And I guess I would look for discussion and hopefully someone offering a substitute motion to approve the amended list, but with...
Substitute motion to approve the amended list?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended list as on the, on the dais. Discussion on that motion. Mr. Green, did you have anything else? Let's go to Alderman, Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wondering, you're taking down a lot of people from the public, but you're leaving all the sign companies on. That's just to appease the sign companies in, make sure they have total representation?
Well, and that's a fair, Mr. Brown, that's a very good question. The way I looked at it was there are six members from the community and five members from the sign industry, and on eleven-member board, I don't know how you get any more fairer than that, so I...
An awful lot of strength to the sign companies.
I understand. But there again, I think the sign companies all well know the desire to actually look at some amendments to this, and quite honestly, I think it's going to be their responsibility to come to the table and talk frankly and honestly about the issues. So this, this will put pressure on the sign companies.
When we had one comment in here that we should come with open minds and looking for solutions, and I hope that's the attitude that sign companies will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Green, did you have another comment? I don't know why I have you up here. I'm going to remove you, and let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At legal and finance, I had, there was a question from the audience that I, and I eliminated that question and asked that it be directed to our city attorney, and I sent him an email, and I'm not sure if he's had time to look at it. But the question is, is it was posed to us that the only way to be appointed to this committee was through the mayor's office, and the question never got answered, so I'm hoping that Jason can answer this tonight.
Yep, we'll give you a little bit of latitude. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the aldermanic form of government, appointments are made by the mayor and approved by the council. That speaks to officers. However, in this case, what the council asked was for the mayor to bring appointments forward. If the council makes that request, it's my opinion that the council's role at that point is limited to either approving or denying the appointments that the mayor brings forward. There's another avenue for committees to be appointed. The council could do that through their own leadership of their own volition without involving the mayor. But I will tell you, there is no guidance for how that process works in state law.
Mr. Green, that's only applicable to certain committees. Most, all the standing committees and so forth that are expressly set up, that would be, not be applicable through.
That, that's correct. Any officer of the municipality very clearly has to be appointed by the mayor. But these, these people will not be officers, they'll be members of a, of a task force or a subcommittee.
So any officer has to be appointed through the mayor's office? I think that's pretty clear, we understand that.
Yes.
But if it's a committee? In this case, we did direct the mayor to ask for eleven people. We have thirteen, but, so it's just clear that in the future, if the council decides to have council leadership make a task force, they can sure have the opportunity to do that.
You certainly can. As I mentioned, though, there's no guidance in state law for how that process works, so there could be some room for...
I understand that. There's a lot of things that we don't have guidance for that we can do. The other thing I wanted to make, I think Ms. Hamilton, I'm not sure if she was on this list earlier? Is that the same person that spoke earlier?
That is correct.
Okay. She's absolutely correct in saying that the other task force was somewhat, I mean, they had a real not a very clear position in what, what they were actually looking for, and that's my concern with this task force, too. And I, number one, I'd hate to see Ms. Hamilton not be on this task force, but she seemed to have a very clear and open mind of coming on, on the task force and looking at opportunities. I've been on this council for three years, and I have not had one person come to me and point on a particular billboard in our city that they would like removed or changed. And obviously, we have put on a billboard moratorium, and so there's obviously a feeling from the council that there is some problems with particular billboards, yet I don't know which ones they are. I'm hoping that we can identify those at some point, so moving forward, if we can identify the billboards that we're having a problem with, maybe we can identify those particular problems and we can take that route. So if anybody has anything to add to that, I'd appreciate hearing that, and I just hope if we, if we do do something with this task force, that they have a, an absolute narrowed focus of what they are to do. If they're going to just overlook the whole, the whole sign code on both on-premise and off-premise, I don't know that they're going to come up with anything in particularly different. And also, I hope that they do get the guidance that it is a recommendation. I'm hoping that they bring forward factual information for the council members who are elected by their constituents in their wards to make those decisions. I will, I will make my decision based upon the information that's given to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I believe Pat Hamilton should be on the committee. I think maybe we could take off one of the old committee members and put someone a little more open-minded. I think I wouldn't be opposed to that if we needed to have eleven members, is just take off one of the old sign people and then put her on there if we could. I don't know which one that would be at this point, but, or just put her on as twelve members with two city council people, because anybody that comes and sits through these meetings and feels that they really want to be on a committee, that's pretty dedicated to put somebody else on. So if I could make a motion to put her on as the twelfth member with two city council So if I can make a motion to put her on as the twelfth member with two city council people, or if someone wants to remove somebody, that's fine, but I think she should be on there.
Just, I'm going to go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Again, the council's role here is limiting to, limited to approving or denying any of the people that the mayor has identified. I think the mayor has the ability to identify another person at this point, if the council's willing to accept that, since you've made a motion on the list, but that'll be his decision at this point.
But this way, if, if, if the council so chooses, if they'd like to add Ms. Hamilton, I have no objections and I will add that to the list. If that's all right with the motion maker and the seconder.
Yes.
Is that, who made the second?
I did.
Okay, very good. So, the motion on the floor is for approval of the amended list with the addition of Pat Hamilton. Okay? Everyone, yes, that's a galloped. I'm pretty sure Pat probably does. Yes, she does. Okay. Further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. So now we're up to fourteen voting members, or twelve voting members and two liaisons?
It'd be up to twelve plus the two liaisons.
You know, I, I think Alderwoman Hadcock had a good point, and I, I think the, really, the, the point is, is that, I guess, let me ask the city attorney this, is the, you alluded earlier, Jason, to the idea of, of the council being able to appoint a, a committee. Um, so explain, explain what you mean there. We, we could just go ahead and appoint our own, or we could appoint our own advisory task force, uh, if we wanted to, and, and pick any of these names or none of these names, if we wanted to.
Mr. Green.
Yes, you could do that, if that's the route you want to go. I would suggest that you vote these down and add an item to, and, one of the next committee agendas, to have the council appoint its own task force.
Okay, so the council can legally appoint its own, its own task force?
There's no statute directly on point, but it's my opinion that that would be something that is inherent in the council's authority, would be to create its own advisory working group.
And the reason that, and I think that this is pertinent to this discussion tonight, um, I can remember, uh, at least one other occasion where the city council did appoint, uh, a, a board, and, uh, want to direct folks' attention to, uh, October two, two thousand and two minutes, and legal and finance minutes, page nine, and it says, uh, Ron Kroger told the committee that he had received approximately twenty-five names of individuals that would like to sit on the Development Appeals and Review Board. Hanks moved to authorize the council president and vice president to review the names submitted for appointment to the Development Appeals and Review Board and bring those names back to council for approval, and then in eleven-four, two thousand and two, there was a motion made by Hank, seconded by Dreyer, to approve the appointments. So we have done this before. Um, I'm disappointed that we've ended up with, uh, it coming out of the meeting last week that the coun, council wasn't allowed to do these appointments. I think, um, there certainly was a historical knowledge up here that, that could be done, and, uh, I, I hope that there is a, um, a scope and purpose to this, uh, task force so that we don't end up with, um, with, uh, fourteen frustrated, uh, board members and, uh, who have received a boil-the-ocean mandate. I am not really sure what the scope of this, uh, is. We've had a number of committees, uh, over the years, uh, to discuss billboards, and, uh, I think that there are some simple solutions. Mr. Kennison, uh, had some excellent, uh, excellent ideas, it was really good, and, and, uh, hopefully, he'll be invited to, uh, attend the, uh, task force, um, as well, but I, again, I hope that there's a scope. Uh, the complaints that I have most often received are related into the, uh, off, uh, off-premise signs, uh, I hope that that's, uh, that's looked into, but I'm glad that we have established firmly that the city council does have the authority to, uh, appoint, uh, advisory, uh, boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Did we ever, um, give a direction or a mission statement that this council wanted to direct? Do we have that?
The council was very specific last time when, when they chose not to adopt the recommendations that, that they wanted the committee to go back and take a look at the entire sign code. That was the, the direction that this council gave, uh, the task force. Uh, we took that back to the task force, the task force actually had discussion, and in their mind, uh, that was a completely different issue, um, compared to what they were tasked with, and so what their recommendation was, was to form a new task force to look at the entire sign code per the direction, uh, and request of the council.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval of the amended list as amended. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you everyone for the discussion. We're on to item, on to the bids. Pauline.
The street division opened the bids on October twelfth theoretically, but we did not receive any bids on sand for the winter operations. Therefore, the recommendation is to authorize the public works department to obtain informal quotes as allowed by state bid law.
So you're looking for a motion to allow staff to go out and get quotes?
Informal quotes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine is for liquid road de-icer, which was opened also on October twelfth, two thousand and ten, and we only received one bid on this, so the recommendation is to award the bid in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to EnviroTech Services, Inc., and that is at a unit price of one dollar and twenty-five cents.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to, uh, EnviroTech Services for a unit price of one dollar and twenty-five cents. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Sumption, is this in line with, um, the bids last year?
Let's go to Robert Ellis.
For this item, or Mr. Ellis?
I believe last year we paid a dollar a gallon for this material, and it was awarded to Smith Fertilizer and Grain Company, so it's fairly close.
Okay, so they just chose not to bid, or you don't?
Yeah.
You just advertise and no one bid?
We just had, received the one bid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Robert, you said this, but I just want to make sure it's clear, the unit that we're talking about up here, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, the unit, Robert, is, is it gallons?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And what is that in liters? Just kidding.
And where's the decimal point? Discussion on the motion. Motion on the floor is for approval to award the contract for a unit price of one dollar and twenty-five cents per gallon. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eighty, please.
The next item is for the Main Street Square site development project, which was continued from the last meeting. The bids are the same, the recommendation is actually to reject all bids and authorize re-advertising of this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject all bids and to authorize staff to go back out, uh, for, uh, to advertise for new bids. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but, uh, is there a reasoning for, I mean, is there some kind of rationale of why we were off by, why these bids were off by a million bucks, or nine hundred thousand, or whatever the number is?
I, I think I may be able to answer that. Uh, what the intent is to go out and, and rebid this and have a number of alternatives, uh, the, uh, they believe that this was going to come in under the four-point-five million dollars, there were very, very few alternates that were actually in this, and so they're going out, uh, they've restructured the bid process to make sure that it will come under the four-point-five and have a number of alternatives, uh, to make sure of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there, is the RFP available for this somewhere online or something?
Pauline?
And I, quite honestly, don't know if the RFP was online or not. I, I do know that it was advertised, and I think that they had to pick up their specifications from the, um, the architect or the engineer on the project.
I just, I think it was like, there was another project that I remember that they, people overbid because of the timeframe concerns and those types of things, and I want to make sure that, that wasn't the case here.
Can we go to Mr. Green, who's waving at me? He may have the answer for you. Mr. Green.
Just a brief comment, um, we're mixing terminology here. When you have a bid, a competitive bid situation, you don't have a request for proposals or an RFP. RFP is a, a substitute process for a competitive bidding. What you would have is a set of specifications, and Ms. Sumption referenced that the architect or the engineer on the project would have those. Any interested bidder could obtain them from, from the architect or engineer.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a way that we can obtain the specifications for this?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, it's public.
Oh, okay. Uh, who, who's the engineer? I mean, are they the same guy? I mean, I can't imagine being off by a million bucks on this small of a project.
Yep. Dean Rodell, or, and Dean was actually the lead, and then I believe the local architects were forefront design.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wyffenbach, it is absolutely public information, and if you'd like, we can actually, uh, forward a copy of that to each one of the council members.
Yeah, if, if it's available, that'd be easier for me. Thank you.
Okay. Charlene will make sure I don't forget. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with this, uh, since we're on the subject, I guess I am kind of curious if there's some sort of timeline that we're looking for, uh, since we're going back on this, if there was originally any sort of timeline that we were hoping to, uh, start breaking ground and get this rolling, and if you have that information.
The timeline I've, I've seen is they're hoping to go out, advertise this, I believe, uh, for three to four weeks, uh, get it and actually award it, uh, sometime November, and by the first of December, uh, actually be breaking ground.
December, all right. Uh, and, uh, Mayor, if I may also, I was just wondering, is there a completion date that we're kind of hoping to, uh, hit?
We were certainly hoping for Memorial Day, but more than likely, uh, we'll probably be fortunate if we make Labor Day based upon the, the timeframe, and there again, the concerns, uh, they want to make sure that they give any contractor the ability to get it done without, uh, hefty, uh, penalties on the backside for not making, meeting a completion date, so I think that's, it's going to be, it's, it's more open.
All right. I appreciate the information, I'm just, uh, you know, looking at the status of this and hoping that, uh, we can proceed forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., okay, Mr. Green pulled off. Mr. Quaker, Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Was Memorial Day the original projection complete date? I mean...
That is my understanding, yes.
That was directed by who? Was that directed as part of the engineers', was that calculated as part of the engineers' estimate, or was that part of the, the direction when we went out for bid?
Mr. Mayor?
I, I think I can answer that. The hope, uh, the hope was actually have it done by Memorial Day. A couple of things slowed that down, number one, the public vote, uh, and number two, of course, uh, the bid that, uh, came in almost a million, it's about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars over, and so, uh, because of the requirement to go out and rebid the project, uh, there's physically no way to actually have it done by Memorial Day, so it, you're probably talking, uh, I believe, Labor Day or possibly shortly after then.
And, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm trying to understand why it came in nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars high. Was the, was the, what, what timelines were included in the engineers', uh, estimate? I mean, I think that's important to know. Was, was there a direction to, after the engineers' estimate had been put together, to say, "We want this done by Memorial Day," and thus the bids came in a million dollars high?
I do know that part of the original bid specification was, was the requirement that it needed to have completion date by Memorial Day.
Okay.
If that was a directive, I am not aware of that.
Okay, so, it, it looks like in this situation, we ended up with high liquidated damages, um, uh, included in the, uh, in the bid, which is the same thing that happened to the Civic Center several years ago, so I guess what I, I guess what I would ask is, is that we take a closer look at it, and if, and if even Labor Day doesn't work, then, then let's take a look at it, but there isn't a, it's not fair to ask the folks from downtown to, to try to find another million dollars, and it's not fair to ask the taxpayers to find a million dollars, and it isn't fair to put together unreasonable timelines, uh, and have all these contractors go to all the work of submitting bids that come in way high, so I, I hope that, um, there's a, I guess I would, I would sure like to understand, um, uh, again, um, how it could be that there would be this expectation to meet the engineers' estimate of four and a half million dollars and to have it all done by, uh, Memorial Day, unless, unless the direction was given afterwards, that after the engineers' estimate had come forward, uh, that then we wanted to have it done by Memorial Day. I just try and understand when, when the direction came through, Pauline, to state we wanted to have it done by Memorial Day.
And I understand that, and unfortunately, I can't give you those answers, I was not involved with any of that discussion, so my apologies.
Maybe Robert knows.
Yep. Let's go to Robert Ellis.
I'll, I'll just weigh in on a few things here. I know that, uh, through our work with the property owners for the Sixth Street project, which is in the same location, the thing we heard when we had our public input process was, "We can't be under construction after Memorial Day, that's our busiest time of the year." So that's why we set Memorial Day for our completion date on Sixth Street. I suspect that same reasoning went into the Main Street Square project, but I'm not certain on that. I will say this, in visiting with the low bidder, um, heavy constructors on this project, uh, he had mentioned to me that he probably thought it was going to be an extra six weeks beyond Memorial Day before they could finish the project, and so that was built into his bids. Our liquidated damages are thirteen hundred dollars a day, so for that six weeks, it amounted to thirty-nine thousand dollars, so it's, relatively speaking, the liquidated damage was a very small portion of this bid.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ellis. Alderman Quaker, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just, I want some clarification on this, and maybe my memory is fuzzy here, but if I remember correctly, wasn't the total cost of this project going to be about six-point-five million, and, uh, if I remember correctly, about three-point-five was coming from us?
That is correct.
That is correct, and just a little bit of a recap. Uh, the total project was six-point-five, there was a request for three-point-five million dollars from two thousand and twelve, which the council did approve, three million dollars in private money, but the council, if you remember, did enter into an agreement, um, with, uh, the folks at DRC to allow them to buy specialty equipment, which was part of that agreement, which was identified at almost two million dollars. So the reason you only see four-point-five million dollars as far as the engineers' estimate, that does not include the two million dollars worth of FFNE and, and specialized equipment that they have committed to pay for and to donate to the city of Rapid City, and that, uh, that agreement did come through the city council a couple of months ago, and the council has approved that. Jason, did I miss anything there? Okay.
Okay, so it's, uh, solely the difference here is basically in the equipment that's being donated by DRC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. And, and just a reminder, uh, the city council, uh, was very clear, and they gave, uh, basically in the agreement that any overruns, as far as cost of construction, is to be borne by, uh, DRC, not the city of Rapid City, the, I think the council was very clear on that point. Uh, the three-point-five million dollars was the total commitment by the city, and quite honestly, I don't think there's any expectation, and I know that I have not had any discussions, that that dollar amount will come up, and matter of fact, it's been just the opposite. Uh, they've basically told me that they will not come back and ask for additional money, so. Uh, additional comments? Motion on the floor is to reject all bids and to go out for re-advertising. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this bid specifications, do they make it available to everybody? I mean, inside and outside of the state and everybody?
This, Jason?
And Robert might be able to correct me on this, but my understanding is that these specifications are detailed engineering specifications for the construction drawings that are very thick. I think it's typical that there's a fee for obtaining copies of them, but somebody can come in and look at them. I don't think you could actually prepare a, a, a bid, though, without having the physical copy in your possession that you could work off of. So that's, that's my understanding of the usual process. They're available, but if you want to take one home and look at it, you, you got to pay for it.
Thank you, Mr. Green, but I guess I didn't communicate my point very well. I meant was, could anybody who wanted to bid on the project, bid on the project? How did, how did, how did they made aware of the project? I'm sorry.
Jason Green, city attorney.
There's a process of public advertising, I believe it's, uh, published twice in the newspaper, at least ten days prior to the bid opening. Um, I think there, there may be some trade, uh, publications that the, um, bids also get put in, so there's, there's a usual process, and that was followed in this case.
Thank you.
But your answer is yes, anyone, anyone who's a qualified bidder can bid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Green, anything else? Motion on the floor is to reject all bids and to authorize staff to go out for a rebid. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number eighty-one.
Item number eighty-one is Catron Boulevard Reconstruction Utility Relocation. The state had received five bids, and the recommendation is to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation's award of the total bid in the amount of one million two-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-five-seventy-six forty-five to Upper Plains Contracting, Inc.
Do we have a motion, please?
Move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval, and this is toward the, the bid to Upper Plains Contracting, Inc. for a grand total of one million two-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents.
It needs to be to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Is that all right with the motion maker?
Yes.
And the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, and add is to concur with the state DOT. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I haven't seen Upper Plains Contracting in our bid process before. Is that, I'm assuming they go through all the same?
Let's go to Robert Ellis. Let's go to Robert Ells. I know that they've done some work for us.
Yeah, they're, they're a large firm. I believe they're out of Aberdeen, South Dakota. They do a lot of Department of Transportation-heavy roadway work. They did the project in Belfus, state highway through Belfus this year. They've done some work out here on the interstate. So, they, they're all over the state.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to ward, to concur, almost messed that up, concur with the state DOT to award the bids to Upper Plains Contracting for $1,261,576.45. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Pauline. We have no items from the mayor. Item number 82, and that is from Alderman Quaker, review and publication of the anti-retaliation resolutions. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just clarification, this is from Alderman Quaker and Mason.
Okay.
Just a brief historical context, since I know most council members are aware of, of the issue and the concern. In February of 2009, I had expressed concerns about making sure that city employees had the ability to freely approach council members, since at that time, it had been deemed that, that matters of general concern are, if an item could be expressed or brought forward through the grievance process, it could then not be brought forward to the, to any member of the council. I believe that that was not a good way of doing business. I believe that chain of command is important, but it, but city employees should be able to also have that ability to talk to their council members if, if they see need to do so. So, the mayor, in response to my concerns, did draft a memo, which I believe to be well-written, and was sent out to all employees in the city's email system. It's attached here. I understand that at some future time, it may be included in the policy manual. It has not been in the past in my understanding, and I simply would like to have that memo that's dated February 11, 2009, which includes a very important sentence way at the bottom regarding employment-related issues. It says very specifically, "The city will not retaliate against an employee for discussing employment-related issues directly with the mayor or human resources director, city attorney, or member of the city council." So, anyway, I'm not asking for changes in, in the wording. I'm simply asking for a better dissemination of this policy. I believe that having this memorialized in, in, in a resolution form, it already is technically a resolution, but having it in a resolution form would be a very good thing to do, because then it would be published and more readily accessible. So, I would like to offer a motion to proceed with putting this memorandum in an official resolution form similar to the December 2, 2002 policy.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Let me just explain, when, when we, I saw this on here, it was a very fair question, and so I did contact Keith Lesprin, who is our risk management officer. Just, you know, you will see the, you should have a packet on the front. It starts with sexual harassment policy, and there's a number of different policies in here, including all the resolutions. And if you go to the very back page, on the very back is actually the resolution, which basically was passed in, let's see, December 2, 2002, which very clearly states that the city council and the city as a whole will not retaliate against any employee for talking to elected officials. That, I verified this with Keith. This is an item that has been handed out to all new employees in the new employee orientation process. That has been. Then, the memo on the page forward, which was the memo that I wrote, dated February 11, 2009, that is also handed out to all new employees. In addition, the memo that was dated February 11, 2009, I did email to every single employee, and we also sent a hard copy to every single employee. I also did verify that the resolution from 2002 was viewable, was actually, has been linked for quite some time on the city's website under Human Resources. And noting Alderman Quaker's concerns, we did create a new link to make sure that both the 2002 resolution and the, and the memo from 2009 are in an additional link on the Human Resources page. So, I think they're, the, all city employees have certainly been made aware of it. It is available to the public, not only in the minutes, but also directly on our website under the employment tab. With that, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I remember we voted on this before, and we decided not to put it in a resolution in 2009, because it was emailed out to every employee, and I thought that was fair, and it also is in the employment-related issues. So, we have voted on this, to put it in a resolution, and it had failed last time. There is four new council members, and if that's what happens again, I can understand it, because this has already been brought up. Unless there's a new issue, and there's something that we need to change differently on this, we are bringing up the same issue again. Unfortunately, I think that's when something's been voted on and put down before, unless there's new issues or new things that need to be added, we could do that. But at this point, to be fair, it is in the employment-related issues area, and it was emailed out. So, I think that was being very fair of the mayor and the city council to make sure that was done, and the city attorney that had drew this up. So, at this point, I think there's no reason to put it in a resolution.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate everybody's efforts in making sure that, that this gets to the employees. I see no harm in making this a resolution and giving it the council's seal of approval. I do agree that there was some council people in the past that didn't want, for some reason, to give this item their seal of approval, and I'm going to support this motion to give it the council's seal of approval with a council resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this item being brought to me by Alderman Quaker, and after discussing it and looking over some of the items that have been presented tonight, my interest also comes in compounding with the fraud and waste hotline, which also allows for employment relations. And I see this a step in the right direction with the direction of the employment relations aspect of the fraud and waste hotline. One of the things that I guess has been an interest in talking with Kevin Tome, our human resources director, and also city attorney Jason Green, is my interest in protecting the employees of the city against any sort of repercussions for coming forward with vital information. And I guess I'm also interested in, in looking at some of the internal policies and making sure that employees are allowed in a free, open discourse environment at city hall. And I, I see this as a step to just publicly state that that's what we're for, is for open, public discourse in exchange of ideas to move in the right direction with the city. And I guess that's what I'm really looking at here, and I, I think Alderman Quaker has brought forward a valid item with that notion in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Charlene, motion on the floor is to adopt the February 11, 2009 memorandum to all employees from Mayor Hanks in the form of a resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are on to, that's right, thank you, 82A. And hang on a second, let me find my notes. That was the update on the hotline. I'm going to go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe actually Alderman Quaker brought that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Quaker, I can't find my notes. I knew it was your topic. That's my apologies. That's why I went to, Alderman Quaker.
First of all, I just wanted, I do want to use this opportunity to thank Alderman Mason for bringing forward this, this idea, and I believe that this is an excellent move for the city, and would just like to know when it will be implemented.
Okay. Let's go to Jason Green. Do you have an update for us? I know that they're real, real close.
Yeah, as I mentioned previously, there are a number of legal issues with the contract that I'm not willing to sign off on. I was out of the office most of the last two weeks, so I haven't had an opportunity to visit with the folks at the vendor's legal office about them. I will be having a phone conversation with them this week. If we're able to resolve those issues to my satisfaction, Mr. Tome will simply be able to sign off on the contract. If I don't feel that they're appropriate, that will come forward to the council, probably at the next legal finance, for the council to make the decision as to whether or not you want to intro, enter into a contract that has problematic provisions. So, next legal finance.
Okay, very good. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. And who will have the ability to call the line?
The question, Mr. Green, was who has the ability to call the fraud hotline?
My understanding is that it will be all city employees.
And how about former city employees?
I'm, I'm not sure. It's been a while since I've looked at the actual wording in the contract. I'd be happy to address that at legal and finance, so.
Yeah, I would, I would like to understand that, because, you know, let's say that someone was dismissed, and they had uncovered something big, and they decided to make a phone call, but they're no longer allowed to make the phone call because they're not a city employee. Issues like that, I would just like to understand. And, you know, I'm also wondering whether, you know, who else would be able to call, whether council members or, or, or members of the public, or who would be able to call it. And the other, the other detail that I think needs to be worked out is, is who receive the, who receives the, the notification. So, as my understanding, you'll be bringing forward a report on that, the next legal.
That's correct.
Can I just continue this, then, to the next legal and finance meeting?
I don't think it's necessary, because it will already be on the agenda.
Okay.
I think we just acknowledge the report. You'll have an action item at legal and finance.
Just to give the council something to think about, I think that we all need to be made aware of when, when a call is made, made to this, made to this line. And there are some important reasons for that, but it ensures checks and balances, and ensures that an issue is, is followed up on. And I think that that's very important, to make sure that the notification process is such that both branches of government receive notification. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't realize there was any constraints on anybody calling the fraud line. I don't, I guess I would pose that question to Mr. Green. I didn't know.
Mr. Green.
Is there some constraints upon who can use that, that phone number?
My recollection is that it's for city employees. We can certainly flesh out exactly who it's for at legal and finance. I just, it's been so long since I've looked at the contract, I can't answer the question.
Okay, I understand. I'm not going to hold you accountable for that. I mean, I, I just, I want to, you know, I want to make it clear that I'm, I'm for everybody to have access to that. It's not necessarily always employees who uncover something that, you know, in this big of an organization, that may make a difference. So. The other quote, the other, Mr. Mayor, I was going to make a recommendation for our city attorney, just to maybe, if, if he approves it, then he could just send us an email and say that I'm, I'm, I've resolved the issue, or if, if not, then just tell us it's coming to legal and finance, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
I'm gonna go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably didn't articulate this clearly, but if the legal issues can be resolved to my satisfaction, and Mr. Tome is able just to sign the contract, what will come forward will still be the policy that the council will need to adopt on what happens when a call is made. So, either way, there will be an action item for the council to consider.
Yeah, I, I thought you were pretty clear. I just wanted to know. If, if you, if you got it worked out, then I just would like to know, and maybe the rest of the council might just like to know. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to comment on this, and I would like to thank city attorney Jason Green for his hard work on this. I've been included in some of the email correspondence, going back and forth, and I know he's been diligently working on this issue. And also, community resources director Kevin Tome has been working on a lot of the technical aspects of getting this line implemented. And I know that our current status is, is that Kevin Tome, one of the last emails I, I received was working out, actually getting the dedicated line solidified, and it looks like he's been moving forward at a pretty fast pace at getting that established. One of the things that I am curious about, and I guess I'd like to direct the question to city attorney Jason Green. Mr. Green, I'm just curious, with Alderman Quaker, he brought forward a while ago a notification policy, and Alderman Quaker recently mentioned his concern of getting notifications of calls. Would his policy cover that, that instance?
Mr. Green.
The best I can say right now is that it may. It will depend on the nature of the call, and whether or not it's covered by the notification procedure. Whether it is or not, though, I think it would be wise to have a separate policy simply on the, on the fraud and waste, so there's no question about what's applicable and what's not.
Thank you, Mr. Green, and all yields.
Okay, motion on the floor is to, is it to acknowledge? What's, Charlene, what's actually the motion? I don't know if we ever get, I'm not sure we ever got to a motion.
Offer a motion.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Quaker.
I'm going to offer a motion in just a moment, but I, one, one other thing I think is important to mention, Mayor, and that is, is that all board members should be able to, to call this line. Civic Center Airport, Planning Commission, Sign Board, whatever, but all of the appoint, this should be appointed officials and employees and former employees. We'll have to talk about whether we want elected officials and members of the general public to be able to call, call it, but certainly, all the board members, committee members should be able to, to call it if they come across something. But with that being said, if it's still in order, I'll just offer a motion to acknowledge the report.
Okay, we have a motion to acknowledge. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd be more than willing to offer that motion up, since I didn't speak.
Actually, since this was, a motion to acknowledge basically is informal action, Jason, so it's, it's not inappropriate to talk before opening, offering a motion to acknowledge, or is it? Or it would be, because a continuation motion...
Under continuation motion, it clearly is. Under a strict reading of Roberts' rules, you're supposed to offer a motion, but that's really not the practice of the council. I don't think it's inappropriate to offer the, the.
Either way, I'll offer the motion if that's the case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second on the floor to acknowledge. Discussion on the motion. Let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
Well, it's not so much on the acknowledgement, but isn't this line anonymous? So, it does, I mean, is it, would be open to anybody that had the phone number that could call them? Because you, you're not going to be asking people to identify themselves, are you?
Go to Jason Green, city attorney.
My recollection of the way this works is that the phone call is anonymous. There's no need to, for the caller to identify themselves. They're given an access number that they can check back in several weeks to see if there's additional questions or anything like that. But that's completely with the employee. There's no notice, or no knowledge on the part of the city staff as to who made the call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We are on to the public hearing items. These are items 82 through 90, I'm sorry, 83 through 92, 83 through 92 inclusive. Chair, look for motion to open the public hearing on items 83 through 92 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Yes. Yes, Mr. Green.
There was a change to the agenda, and I believe it was items 35 and 36 were moved to after 92.
Yes.
They should be included in the comment period as well.
I'm sorry, I thought, at the, at the beginning of the meeting, I thought we were going to hold separate public comments on each one of those three items that were moved.
You certainly could if you want to. I think in this case, because they're, they're public hearing items, you could do it all within this public hearing.
Okay.
Item 12 obviously is not ready for action yet, so that will not be included.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, we are dealing with items 83 through 90, and as long as I'll write with the motion maker and the second, to also include items 35 and 36. Thank you, I thought it was. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I have no speaker request forms on any items 83 through 92 inclusive, or on items 35 or 36. Now, at this point, we do leave the public comment period open, so we'll move on. We're on to the continued public hearing consent items. These are items 83 through 90, 83 through 90. Marsha, do we need to have any of those polled? How about from the rest of the staff or the council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items 83 through 90, per the recommendations on the printed agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Does take us the end of the consent, public hearing consent items. We're, Chair, look for motion to close the public hearings on items 83 through 92 and items 35 and 36. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us, we're on to the non-consent public hearing items. These are items 91 and 92. Let's go to item number 91. Let's see, who used your, was that Deb or Sam, the reason it was in? Sam, you want to give her a whirl? Item number 91, please.
Item 91 is to authorize the mayor and finance officers to sign waiver right to protest the future assessment of the installation of water along I-90, located between East Mall Drive and I-90 west of Elkvale Road. Recommendation is for approval, and that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 92, please.
Item 92 is a request by Dream Design International, Inc. for variance of subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install water along I-90 as per 16.16 in the municipal code, located between East Mall Drive and I-90 west of Elkvale Road. Recommendation is for approval with stipulations. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 35, please.
The legal and finance items?
Yep. Deb, you want to read that in? Item 35, please.
Item 35 is M-Hill Study Area Plan approved. Quest by City of Rapid City to consider an application of amendment to the comprehensive plan to adopt the M-Hill Study Area Plan, located south of Interstate 90, west of Interstate I-90, north of Omaha Street, and east of Ridgeline between Interstate I-90 and Deadwood Avenue. Can I move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is item number 35. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 36, please.
36 is a...
Motion passes. Item thirty-six, please.
Thirty-six is Rapid TRIP twenty thirty-five approved. Request by City of Rapid City to consider an application of amendment to the comprehensive plan to adopt the Rapid TRIP twenty thirty-five long-range transportation plan for Rapid City area. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Item number thirty-six. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We're on to the bill list. Item number ninety-three. Pauline.
The bill list before you is seven million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. We do have three claims to add. One to Brewer Construction for eight hundred and three dollars and ninety cents. Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc., for eight thousand, one hundred dollars. And Western Municipal Construction, Inc., for eleven thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars, for a total of seven million, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty-two cents.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as amended for a grand total of seven million, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty-two cents. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session.
Yes, for the purposes permitted by SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes as permitted by SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. An executive session. Thank you.
And that legal action will be initiated to recover the funds if the funds are not returned within two weeks. Yield to the floor.
Could we have a motion, please? Oh, we need it. Was that a second or was it a motion? Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Quaker. Did you want the floor?
In a minute.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, I think that this has been requested without the threat of litigation. I would just assume that we carry forward the last, what the council had directed, just to send the letter.
Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Oh, it's fine.
Very good. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, Alderman Wyffenbach, was that a substitute motion or a friendly suggestion to the motion? Would, I would accept that friendly suggestion as the seconder.
Well, the motion maker was here. The motion on the floor was to approve item twelve, and so it would be up to the motion maker whether or not to accept the friendly amendment.
I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. And Alderman Wyffenbach, one more time, can you?
The amendment was just to follow through with the original request from the council to send the letter to Mr. McCarthy. Thank you.
Very good. Everyone clear on, is there any objection? If not, we will assume that that will be the motion, and that will be to require a letter be sent to Mr. McCarthy. Further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. And just so we're all on the same page, this would be in accordance with not only the motion that was on last week's committee agenda, but also the nine twenty-eight, two thousand and ten Public Works meeting, page one, where there was unanimous motion that also asked for the letter to be sent. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.